My fish been up there trying to get air, so it's not gonna be good.
Lord, thank you for just watching over us. Please be with the commissioners and the judges that do the work for the county and just please help them to do as you will in this ring.
Thank you, sir. You on that pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, regularly scheduled Eastern County Commissioners Court meeting. It is April the 11th at nine o'clock. And all commissioners and county judges present, do they have a quorum? Let's get started.
Just go, you have a public participation.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is item number three. Okay, first up is to read and sign the minutes. I've got two sets of minutes here, one from March 28th, one from April the 7th. Anyone have any questions or comments on these sets of minutes? Having none, having heard none, can we have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Is this it? What am I doing now? Today?
Yep, it is. It's been here since very, it is today.
Not really.
Probably through the steam thing.
Who is that?
I was just.
Did you tell Gayle?
I didn't. But he's retired.
He's retired. He is.
Oh, he is, that's right.
Yeah, we did, yeah. I didn't know if there's some extension, we could take it if there is.
All right, next up is item number two, update from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. The video highlights from Eastern County Livestock Show and Creative Art Show, TJ Cummings, Amy Old Brian Glenn, and Corclo. Come on up.
Well, it probably feels like six months since the county show at this point, but we did this last year and we wanted to do it again. And it's just highlights of the show, creative arts and livestock, and thanking y'all for everything y'all do to support the show and all these kids, four actors in the county. And as we were watching this, Corco was the mastermind behind putting it together, so we want to thank her for that. But when I was looking at this morning, I was looking at some of these kids and everything that's happened in the last three weeks. There's kids I know for a fact have been impacted in our county, and so, I mean, it's kind of weird watching it now. But everything that y'all do, everybody does to help these kids and the community is very much appreciated.
Let's hook up on the speakers coming out the screen. Sounds good.
Go without Riley and Peavers. I don't know when they leave. I don't know if we're gonna have stocks, have to stop having stock shares. Seems like what's going on? That's fabulous. I like this. Very nice.
Were you there? I didn't see you in any of those.
I was in the back hurting cats to get them up there.
Good job putting that together, too. Very nice. You bet. TJ, would you like to say if you were?
No, I appreciate what y'all done. Sorry it took so long to get here.
Been a little busy? Past three weeks been a little busy for you? We've also got the report from both Ag and Family Community Health, if we want to go ahead and accept that.
Do, oh.
Should be in your file. I had it.
For the reports?
Yep.
They wouldn't have all the types. Yes, he has to remember financials.
Can we have a motion to approve the reports from TJ and from Amy? Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye as well. All right, good deal. Thank y'all all for what you do, for 4H FFA, all of our Ag kids and producers. All right, next up is item number three. Discuss, consider allowing full payment of paid time off, PTO for line of duty death for Deputy Sergeant Barbara Finley. Sheriff Wager, and we've got someone here that wants to make a public participation, Beth Keen. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. I got to know Barbara. I'm in and out of the courthouse, not just for business, delivering flowers. Barbara is one special lady. I pay taxes. I'm a taxpayer. I'm also a voter. I brought my cards and my husband's cards. We both vote constantly. Barbara was one of the most wonderful deputies ever. Yes, she was always smiling, she was always laughing. And I've been told when I hit this building, Kathy Jento and Andrew May know when I'm in this building. Because it's the laugh, because generally I'm laughing. I know a lot of times I come here and I'm not laughing. The taxpayers and the voters would like to please give her her full benefits. I heard rumors and it upset me, and that's the reason I'm here. I despise rumors, because that's all they are, is rumors. We want, as taxpayers and the voters, we demand all be paid to her family. And God bless this woman for giving her life to save our high school children, our elderly parents. They might not have been my parents, but they were someone's parents. The woman saved lives. She deserves full benefits. And I know it's not the county. It may be the state that may try to withhold them. Please, let's not do this. God bless Texas and God bless Barbara Finley's family. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
All right. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, so this is one of those technicality deals that's in the books that we only pay half when somebody leaves. But she didn't leave intentionally. She wasn't fired, she wasn't run off, she wasn't, she didn't retire or anything like that. And I feel that it's only right that she gets her full benefits. She still, they paid out half and still owed ninety-nine point seven nine hours of that, which was a thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars eighty-four cents.
There's actually nothing in our personal policy about line of duty death. There probably should be.
Yes, and I'll bring that. We need to update the policy, and I will bring that with that change in there.
I'll make a motion to repeal. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor say aye. You're generous. All right, continue. To her beneficiary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, discuss, consider to approve detention contracts with Taylor County Juvenile Justice Center, Grayson County Juvenile Justice Center, Garza County Juvenile Justice Center. Problem three.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. I'd say it's that time of year again, but technically, we usually do this in September. But I needed to add a few more contracts. We're actively trying to find a placement for a certain child right now. So we've got hopes that one of these are gonna accept him. We've gone through about twenty tries. So Grayson and Post or Post Judication Facilities were trying to get him approved for. And Taylor County was just an oversight. We should have done that in September. I don't know why we didn't just.
Are they all set up just for me to sign?
They are. A little green sticky.
All right. Can we have a motion then to enter into these contracts with these Juvenile Justice Centers just named off and allow me to sign the same? Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Let me get these signed. I'll sign them all at one time and get them back to you.
Perfect.
I don't think there's a place on here to attest to, although it's never a bad idea.
Here's a placeholder. I always forget. Seventeen years, seventeen years later.
I'll get those signed.
Thank you.
We get them to Kathy and then she can get you a copy of it.
That'd be perfect. Actually, I need the originals. There's two, two of each.
Okay.
I need all, I need all of them back.
You need all the originals back?
I need all of the originals back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number five, discuss, consider disposal of certain courthouse maintenance items. Not a grade. I've got a list here of all sorts of things. What do you have, sir?
A bunch of stuff I got stuck with and probably all thrown away, most of it. And there's some, there were some lasers or scanners. I was going to see if I can donate them to the Ranger College. They were wanting some. There's three of them.
Three scanners. Let's see where those are.
They're just in the, to go to dump. They're number one.
Ranger College is a taxing entity, correct?
Oh, yeah. Shouldn't be a problem. Anything else for donations?
That was it. Rest of it's just junk, really.
Want some more?
I know what happens when you clean out.
I know.
All right, so we need a motion then to allow Donnie with Maintenance Department to dispose of these items with the exception of the three scanners, and those will be donated to Ranger College.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. Let Kathy get caught up. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Did you get a copy of it?
I did not.
I'm gonna give you the copy of that.
Okay, thank you for giving it back, please.
All right, thank you.
If you ever decide you want some more, I got plenty.
All right.
You don't need a big truck, you're gonna get a big truck.
Number six is discuss, consider approval of premium pay request for county employees with American Rescue Plan funds act. Robert Rains.
I'm gonna speak to Robert. Judge, I just wanted to see if we can get some of this money paid out to the employees. It's already going out other places. I'd like to see it go to the employees right now, see if we can make something work.
Right away to go through that same application process, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
To go through, length of community management systems for eligibility. So is there an application actually in place from anybody about it?
I didn't know what we had to do. I was gonna see if we could talk about numbers and whatever else we needed to do. I didn't know how we needed to do it, but if there's an application.
Yeah, there's an application for all the expenditure of ARPA.
Okay.
Who has those applications? Jill Finney.
Jill Finney.
Maybe she needs to come sit down and talk to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she'll be happy to.
She's been to all the entities in the county that I know of.
Except us? Or with one fan?
No, she's been here before.
Non-commissioners' court.
Yeah, I think she has. I know Judy's been here multiple times.
Yeah, I think that meeting was not, it was not a Commissioners Court meeting when we sat down with her.
Well, we need to get the application process. What, I guess we need to talk about some numbers. What were you thinking about? Were you thinking about additional amount per hour or additional, just a?
I don't think we can do the hourly deal.
Just per?
Like a lump sum thing. I think the hourly deal would be just way more problems than it's worth.
I was gonna ask Ms. Ray what she's supposed, like what she's wanting to deal with.
It can't equate to more than thirteen dollars an hour.
Right.
So you have to do like a look back period. So if you did a lump sum to employees, and Jill may contradict me on this now because they keep changing the rules, even though there's final rules. But if you say it's for eight weeks, so employees that have been here eight weeks, as long as they're not getting more than thirteen dollars an hour. So we have to kind of figure that out. And Jill knows that the American Rescue Plan backwards and forwards, so she can help us on that.
We'll have another Commissioners Court meeting on the 25th. We want to see if she can be here and go through the application process with us.
Yeah, that'd be good. For what period are we gonna pay for?
Well, and.
The thirteen dollars is what you just said, Ms. Ray?
Yes, so if we were doing, and I don't know what y'all have in mind for a lump sum, I mean, we've thrown around some numbers.
We've thrown around several numbers.
So if it, let's just say it was two thousand, just to take a number, divided by thirteen is a hundred and fifty-three point eight four. So basically, we'd have to look back four weeks.
Right.
So as long as they had been here and worked for four weeks, and that's full time. So you just have to be sure you're not paying more than thirteen dollars an hour. So if it's, if you go with a higher amount, we'll have a longer look back. Fire departments asked for twenty-five thousand, that's another two hundred thousand. The water district asked for.
Two.
I thought it was five.
Five hundred.
That's right, that is five hundred thousand.
The other water supply asked for, is it around fifty thousand?
For westbound.
I don't remember. Honestly, don't remember.
I have it all written down somewhere. And who else have we committed?
Two water systems, hospital.
Fire department.
Eight fire departments. I think that's it.
So that's nine hundred, let's say nine hundred and fifty thousand. So we have, it's one point seven three million, one point. It's in our financial report. And it's sounding iffy as to whether we actually get the next part. Thank you. It's one point, one million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars, seventy-eight cents that we have right now.
Minus what we're already obligated.
Right.
It'd be about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty thousand or so left.
Okay.
We should have it.
Four, two thousand. It just, that's gonna still be, even two thousand, it'll still be five hundred thousand dollars, though, won't it?
Well, it's not elected officials, which I'm putting myself in there.
We've also obligated to some point about the software.
Oh, the software, too.
That'll take up the rest of what's left over after we do the premium pay.
Yeah, and that was what, almost half a million?
Yep.
So you're probably talking, and are you going to do it for part-time people also on a prorated basis?
I think we ought to.
Yeah, so then you're talking a hundred employees.
That's, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out, is there gonna be enough money if we did do that?
Software.
The premium.
Software.
Yeah, software. Plus give them, that's what I was trying to figure out. There ain't enough, is there, Ms. Ray? No, ain't posed.
There will be if we get the second payment.
Yes, so, and I don't know, do you have a number that you're trying to do?
About to.
About two thousand? So that'd be, and this is rough, two hundred and fifty thousand. So yes, there would be that much left.
That's good to know. Sound like a plan, we get.
I'll see if Ms. Finney can be here to help us through that application process, process, process to make sure that we get done what we need done.
Good. Do you think, Ms. Ray, we do ought to do part-time?
I think we should.
I think as long as they meet the parameters, yes.
And what are those?
Well, if we did the two thousand dollars, it'd be thirteen dollars an hour.
Oh, okay. But is there a particular date parameters that you got in there?
Well, no, we would just have the look back period. So, and then we just have to do it prorata. So is part-time getting a thousand, are they getting?
Yeah.
So we'll just have to look at it.
Okay.
So the employees, a hundred employees, is that counting part-time or does that count?
I can't, yes, that'd be counting, because I did, we pay about a hundred and twenty-five employees. So if you take off twenty-three for officials, then.
What about employees that's not here anymore?
I don't think.
Don't think we can pay them.
Yeah, they have to be a current employee.
What about the new hires that came in after a certain date?
They won't meet the look back period. So that's what.
We don't know what look back, look back period is.
Well, if it's two thousand dollars, it'll be roughly four weeks that we'll look back.
Okay, okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Let's have a motion then to table this until 25th. Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that is tabled.
And y'all realize I did all that math on this calculator, so.
I think it's dead.
It could come back differently.
Thank you.
Need numbers on the small cash later.
Yes.
All right, item number seven is discuss, consider road crossing agreement with westbound water, County Road 156, Commissioner Maxwell.
Maybe just put in another wire line.
Okay.
They're moving a home in, it's needed water line.
All right, and this is County Road 156, and this is all in precinct one. All right, can we have a motion then, or any other questions? Can we have a motion then to enter into this agreement with westbound water to do a crossing on a water line on County Road 156? Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. He just has one, okay.
Okay, do my normal.
All right, that takes us to item number eight, discuss, consider to approve or reserve Deputy Sheriff Bond.
Yes, I'm presenting you today with Reserve Deputy Sheriff Bond of Ray Russell. He has taken his statement, his oath, and prepared a bond according to the statute. So all we need is just the judge to sign to approve the bond.
All right, any discussion, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to accept the bond and allow me to sign the same? Motion made and seconded. Kathy get caught up?
Good.
Right? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Kathy, can I get a copy of that? Mm-hmm. Yep.
Just the one, place the sign. All right. Number nine is discuss, consider allowing a purchase, allowing purchase of American Rescue Plan-funded fire equipments for Eastern County Byboard account. Ms. Keen?
Chief Hart with Desta Mona Fire Department called me and asked me if the fire departments could purchase through our Byboard account. He said they can get so much more equipment if they purchase through our account, which I guess we would actually have to make the purchase for them. But if the court wants to allow that, then I can place the order for him or sit with him and do it.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
And is that for any department that wants to do?
Did I need to sign anything on that end of it? Okay, all right. Number ten is discuss, consider approval and payment of Olin voluntary fire department request for purchase and installation of a generator and fuel tank for American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is what the application looks like right here, and it'll be something similar that we'll get from Ms. Finney about the county employees.
Okay.
All right, so Olin has made a request for twenty-five thousand dollars, and they have got this sent to us here. Their total bid with all the wine and. wine and propane tank and concrete work comes up to twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And they are requesting twenty-five thousand, which is what we did for, uh, Cisco VFD. Ms. Key, anything on your part of that?
Um, no, sir, like you said, they've gone through the application process, they did provide their quotes, um, and just need approval and approval to go ahead and save them.
Anybody here from Olin VFD?
No, uh, Matt Richardson called this morning, and I told him he didn't need to be here, because he'd already gone through the whole process.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments? Now, we have a motion then to approve this twenty-five thousand dollar funding request to Olin, uh, VFD. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. All right, um...
Would you just sign mine, Ms. Lynn?
Yeah, I think we need to put that on there somehow, right?
I'll put that as a grant file.
There you go, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, item eleven is discuss, consider approval and payment of East Memorial Hospital request for premium pay request for American Rescue Plan Act funds. And like the item just previous, uh, same type of application. Ms. Key, any update on this?
Um, no, just for the court's information, um, Amy Williams with the hospital did submit a flash drive with actual pay records on it. Um, what the last two pages is the summary of pay, the number of employees, and then when they originally did this, this was their shift differentials that are listed. And, um, Jill Finney has actually looked at the records on the flash drive, I made a copy and sent it to her, and she said everything looks okay.
Okay, so their request is for two hundred thousand dollars, and that is for COVID-nineteen hazard pay. Gentlemen, questions, comments? All right, do we have a motion then to approve this, uh, hazard pay for East Memorial Hospital, uh, two hundred thousand dollars out of the ARPA funds? Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
Did you say and pay?
And pay.
Did you see that long wireline, the Masters?
Thank you.
He did.
It was.
Three foot, not a little.
Yeah.
Three footed?
Yeah.
Was it Scotty Shepherd?
Yeah. All right, that takes us to item number twelve, Canada, present cap risk, Gazzby Statement Number Seventy-Five, OPEB reporting, post-deployment benefits other than pensions, actuarial evaluation for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-one, Ms. Key.
And this is the actuarial report that we're required to have every year, uh, from Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number Seventy-Five. And I'm going to take you to what is numbered page three, which is the executive summary. And, um, this is as of September thirty, twenty-twenty-one, so the present value of future benefits is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Total OPEB liability, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Um, that is the current liability for the county. And if y'all would like to look through the report, and if you have any questions, I will get back to Jim Owens, who does this report for us.
Do we have quite a few employees that choose to do this after retirement?
Um, well, it's because...
Not that that's gonna become important or anything, but...
Um, I honestly don't know, because we're not given that information.
You're not in the loop on that.
Right, um, but it's because we allow employees to do, to keep insurance after retirement, that's what creates the liability.
This allows them to purchase a Medicare supplement plan from TAC. Okay. All right, gentlemen, questions, comments? Do we have a motion then to accept this report in as presented?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Thank you. Item thirteen is discuss, consider resolution declaring applicant agent for federal fire management assistance grant during the fires that we had. And you have to make this during the fire, I made two different applications for this, what we call FMAG. Uh, one's for the kid fire, one's for the wheat field fire, and part of this process is that we have to name someone as primary agents and secondary agents, uh, certify what's going to be done. And this pays for emergency protective measures, firefighting activities, and then a small amount for managing the reimbursement projects. It's mainly firefighting activities and emergency protective measures, from category B and category H. But we have to adopt this resolution that, aye as well, and I'm gonna hand... I'm gonna hand one around, everybody. Kathy, if you'd get me a, there's a place for you to attest to it on the very, I think it's the very last sheet. And attest to it, and get me a copy back, please, so I can send it where it needs to go.
You want me to attest, yes?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put that in the grand file.
All right, and then item fourteen is discuss, consider proposed pending contracts and agreements. That will be other than we've already discussed and will discuss in this meeting, anybody have anything to bring up today? It might have popped up since we filed this, okay, nothing for thirteen, excuse me, nothing for fourteen. Uh, fifteen is discuss, consider accepting or filing cyber security training certificates, and we do have quite a stack of them this time. Instead of me reading all of that off, well, I'll read this one off, 'cause it's, it's special. Ronnie Wilson got his certificate.
Oh, yeah.
Did you pass the...
How many times you haven't taken it? Four, four?
And Judge, I would like to present my office, uh, myself, Donna Robertson, Raina St. Peter, and Tiffany Dove, and Miranda Smith.
All right. And that, with the rest of these, I will hand that to you to be accepted in. Do we have a motion to accept those cyber security training certificates?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. And we'll take a break here for a bit. Do we need to take a recess, an official break? Anybody, anybody, once, twice?
Ladies say no.
Okay, we'll wait for Mr. Rains to get back.
Did you watch that Masters judge?
Uh-huh.
It's pretty good.
Was it?
Yeah, it really was, I'm not even a golfer, I watched it.
You gotta have a really big screen TV to see that little ball zoom.
They really got on that ball, you know? They zoomed right in, it was flying. A lot of times in the woods, we really didn't want it, but...
All right, item number sixteen is nine-one-one update, department dispatch update, Sheriff, anything with dispatch today?
Uh, just, we're running really short-handed out there, trying to get people hired, and we've got four, four girls left, full-timers that are experienced. We've hired in, uh, three more, still got one more to find, and try to get. Um, so they're, they're running on fumes out there at the moment, and they're all tired and putting in extra work, but, uh, I've got a, I've got Cogter to come down and do it, we'll be starting class here on the telecommunicated class Monday, uh, this next Monday, here at the Bailey Room. It's two weeks now, they, T-CO decided to up us a week, so, um, we're, we're working on it, just, just behind, so, everybody's just working. Uh, other than that, uh, we got the new frequencies in for the towers, I know I keep talking about towers, but it's been a long, drawn-out mess. Uh, but we got the new frequencies in for the towers, uh, because the last ones were having interference, um, so they're supposed to get installed this week, and we'll start our few weeks of testing to make sure they don't interfere with something else, and then we'll start reprogramming. So, it's all going okay.
Any, want to have any questions or comments? All right, and I don't have anything on nine-one-one, like the addressing part of it at this point. Item seventeen is update on county burn ban, the existing burn ban that we have is a little ways off, but not far from expiring. I have a new burn ban ready to go, come effective today, and it, it will expire on July the ninth, if we adopt it today. So do we have a motion to adopt the new burn ban for today?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well, and it is unanimous. Commissioner Rains, anybody ask you over the weekend?
He called, I didn't answer, Judge, to be honest. Got somebody calling, want to burn it. He ain't your careful, you know?
No, he's... We had six more fires the night, the day after it rained.
Oh, yeah. Where'd it rain at?
Well, it wasn't much of one, but it was still six, six fires that day.
Did you not get rain?
Not drop.
Really?
Really. Rain?
Free, if you let me have one back, please, ma'am.
I'm, I'm serious, we didn't get nothing, driving somewhere.
Wow.
Maybe you should behave better.
Uh, that's for sure.
Ain't gonna doubt about that.
Y'all didn't get anything last night, you know that back of clouds?
We ain't had nothing at all.
You could kinda see a little something, maybe, might be kept in, a little bit of cool breeze came in, and it just stopped. Item eighteen is personnel matters, Ms. Key.
Yes, you each have a report, the time period of that report is March sixteenth through March twenty-ninth. During that time period, there were no new hires, uh, there were three employee terminations, one part-time dispatcher, one full-time dispatcher, and there is one opening for courthouse security.
All right, anyone else have anything to add to personnel report? All right, can we have a motion in to accept the personnel report as presented?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item nineteen, nineteen A, is budgetary imperative matters, certification additional revenue.
Yes, there are certifications, and I need to find them in my stack, thank you, there's one certification.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. It is, do you have yours, Kathy?
I do, yes.
Okay. One thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, sixty cents received from Eastland Iron and Metal Recycling. It was deposited in the Road and Bridge checking account, credited to sales income revenue. I'm asking the court to increase recent four building repair expenditure line by the same one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three, sixty.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments? Can we certify additional revenue, we have a motion to certify additional revenue and allow the expenditure as mentioned? Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nineteen B is emergency amendments.
No emergency amendments.
Okay, nineteen C is amendment changes by fund.
We do have one page of amendment changes, these are adjustments within budgets, um, and there's nothing extra to explain.
Okay.
And this is probably the shortest list you will see for the rest of this...
For a longer list, I found. All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, can we have a motion then to make the amendment changes by fund? Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. All right, that takes us to nineteen B, report of financial condition, Ms. Key.
Yes, uh, there is a report, these are unreconciled general ledger balances as of yesterday. And the first section of the report is the combined statement of cash position for April. General fund checking, four million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, thirty-six cents. Tax pull, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, sixty-nine cents. First Financial Bank CDs, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Texas Bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Shirts Bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Prosperity Bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Tax pull prime, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and six dollars, eighty-six cents. Texas Class, five hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars, twenty-six cents. General ledger balance, all funds on deposit for general fund, seven million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, seventeen cents. Road and Bridge checking, one million, nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, twenty-seven cents. Um, you'll see down, Fund Twenty-Six, Grant, U.S. Treasury Coronavirus, that's where I got the amount. Um, checking is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars, ninety-nine cents. Uh, First Financial Bank CDs, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Texas Class, five hundred thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, seventy-nine cents. Total general ledger balance, one million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars, seventy-eight cents. On page two, at the bottom, you'll see payroll clearing, um, actually has a negative amount, which is incorrect, and operations clearing has, shows two hundred and fifty thousand, seven... and operations clearing has, shows $250,770.44, we're still in the process of getting those accounts corrected and reconciled. But all the payroll for the last, the first quarter, I've entered the journal entries, so now it's just the process of reconciling. Um, there are four pages of that report, then two pages of totals, the next report is the combined statement of revenue and expense for April, and it's showing the month-to-date and year-to-date revenue and expense by fund, um, as of yesterday, general fund revenues were $8,275,772.42, expenses were $5,175,521.63, Road and Bridge revenues, $1,595,168.76, and expenditures, $832,711.91, uh, we're in a satisf, oh, the other funds are listed, we're in a satisfactory, um, revenue and expense position, but I'll remind you that tax revenue, we've collected the vast majority of it, so, uh, that revenue will not be coming in, it'll probably be, uh, end of June, um, there'll be some collections, but we can't count on big amounts. Uh, the next report is the combined statement of cash receipts and dispersments, uh, showing the April beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash dispersments, and ending cash balances by fund and account type. And there are six pages of that, and then the last page is the schedule of lease payments as, and that's current as of March 31st, showing before lease purchase agreements for Road and Bridge.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments on this report? Hearing none, can we have a motion to accept that report for filing?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. All right, that takes us to 19E, the investment reports.
Uh, yes, I did make a copy of the February investment report, which is already presented, and the reason for that is the OPEB CD, which is the second one in the general fund section, uh, account number ending in 5417, matured last week, um, the amount of that CD was $107,263, um, I'm asking the court for permission to redeem that CD and purchase a new CD for the amount that was just presented, $117,710.
$117,000?
Mm-hmm, $110.
I'll make the motion to accept the report and allow the purchase. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. All right. And that should take us to financial reports on F. Kathy, would you tell me which ones you have there, please, ma'am?
I have the district clerk, tax collector, DMV, constables one and two, the sheriff, and the county clerk, and of course, we have the agriculture, but we approved that earlier in the meeting, or agro.
Anyone else have any more reports to bring in to us today? All right, can we have a motion then to approve or to accept those reports that we just presented?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. And last item is bills, claims, and accounts.
There are two sets, the first set is regular payables for today, and the second set, which is actually dated April 6th, but will be paid today, is comdata payables.
All right, gentlemen, questions, comments? Hearing none, can we have a motion then to pay the bills, claims, and accounts as presented today? Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign, and that carries. All right. Kathy, ready, have everything you need?
Yes, sir.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Guess that's a motion, do we have a second? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye as well, we are adjourned. Thank you. Jake, can I talk, Jake, can I talk a few minutes before you go?